Works okay, okay with you.
Okay. Great. I'm gonna have everyone mute their phones, please, because I'm hearing a lot of background noise. Good afternoon and thank you for being here with us this evening. My name is Mally Rosado and I am the President of the Court of Common Council of the City of Hartford. And I am calling this committee of the whole meeting of May 2nd to order. This evening, we are going to have a presentation from Eversource. And let me just recognize my council colleagues as I see them on the screen. So this, this evening I have with me Councilman John Gale, Councilwoman Almika Hernandez, Councilwoman Tiana Hercules, Councilman Josh Mishdom, Assistant Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman Nick LeBron, members of the Hartford Public Access TV from the Office of Council President, I have on the screen, Noelia Ortiz. And this committee of the whole meeting is being broadcasted, broadcasted through several platforms, including Channel 96 on Comcast and Channel 6032 on Frontier. So as I stated before, the only item we have on the agenda today is a presentation from Eversource Underground Transmission Project. And this presentation is from Eversource regarding a long-term planning for an underground transmission project that will bring some necessary electricity infrastructure upgrades to the entire city. And so without further ado, Mr. Jonathan Frigno, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Rosado, and thank you to the rest of the city council for your time this evening. We know how busy you all are. We'll try to keep it brief and informative for you. So my name is Jonathan Frigno. I'm with Community Relations for Eversource. Part of my territory includes the city of Hartford. So that's how I'm involved with this. We also have Kevin Wickos. He's on the project team handling outreach. Brian Alicia is with the real estate team. I see Stephanie Barrios who's also on the project team and Scott Wilkins who's with Burns McDonald, who's helping us out with this project as well. So I'll turn it over to Kevin. He's gonna run through if it's okay with all of you, a brief slideshow presentation. If I could share my screen, is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you all for allowing us to be on your agenda this evening to, to speak about an upcoming project that's very necessary in the city of Hartford. And I know if you hadn't had a chance to look at the slideshow yet, we'll just go very briefly to leave more time for questions and answers at the very end. So currently, this program's called the Underground Cable Modernization Program. And it's to replace underground transmission lines. So what is a transmission line? Very briefly, it takes power from a generating facility in this example, from the South Meadow Power Plant, dumps it into our South Meadow substation, and then it goes underground to the Southwest Hartford substation and Northwest Hartford substation. And from there, it goes into the distribution system, which feeds all of our businesses and new residences. Next slide. So as I said, we have two underground cables currently in Hartford. Out of all the, the power lines that you have in Hartford, only two of them are transmission lines there, and they are underground. And they were put in in 1974. There's a need to replace those. And the need is because of the fact that the, there's only one supplier of this technology. And they have notified utilities across the country that they'll no longer be supplying this, this technology. So it's a fluid-filled cable currently, and we're going to be replacing it with a cross-polyethylene, which is a more environmentally friendly type of cable. And the reason why we need to meet with you and want to meet with you today is because we have to keep the existing line in service until we create the new, until the new line is ready to switch over. So no customers will lose or businesses will lose power as we move along with this project. But it's important that we do replace it because we understand that, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of people in businesses would be out if the line goes out. So again, one line, the existing line will stay energized until the new line is built, and then we'll just do a momentary and we'll switch it over. So everybody remains in power. Next slide. So here's where the two routes go. If you look at, on the bottom right of your screen says South Meadow. That's right along the riverbank. It crosses over two of the NRZs over to almost on the West Hartford Town Line. And from there, the other line goes up to Northwest Hartford, which is right off of Albany Avenue. And again, those are two other NRZ. So we cross over to CSS Con NRZ, the Frog Hollow, the West End, and the Parkville section of your, of the city. Next slide. These are the specific streets. And I, hopefully you have this presentation in front of you, so you can spend a little bit more time if you want to look at it. But the 1704 line, and all that is, is just a numeric that we track our lines. So today, for today's discussion, the 1704 line runs on these streets. The next slide will show you the 1722 line. And again, that's just the name of the line, has no significance other than that's what we call it. And these are the streets that that line traverses. Now, when we met, next slide. We've had several meetings with your staff. And by the way, they're absolutely wonderful, from the mayor's office to all of your departments that we've met with already. And when we initially spoke with the DPW and showed them the route that we were taking and what the existing route was, if you look at this magenta line, that kind of goes diagonally across right in Colt Park. They, they asked us, along with the mayor's office, if there's anything you can do to get that line out of the park, we'd really appreciate it. So our proposal is to, and our alternative is the red line. So we'll basically move the, keep it in place, but we won't disrupt the park. And we're going to excavate and install the new line on the red line. And that's part of the reason why some of our real estate folks are on here today, because they've been in discussions, and you'll get a package when we're ready to seek easements to allow us to change it on your behalf into the new line. And next slide. The other thing that we're contemplating is the existing line, as you see here, that's the Hamilton Street that goes over the floodway, or the causeway, if you will, just adjacent to the right of I-84 and continues on Hamilton Street. The condition of the bridge does not allow us to attach the new existing line. So we'll be seeking easements either on the north side of the bridge or on the south side of the bridge. We're currently looking at the south side of the bridge. But we have engineers working on both. We've had discussions with DPW staff for both sides and what those implications may be. And next slide. So one of the biggest things that we believe is, is a partnership, and we don't want you to be surprised. We don't want your businesses to be surprised. We don't want your residents to be surprised when they say, what's going on out in the street? So this kind of shows you just a very brief as to some of the things that we plan on doing to make sure that everybody's informed, and we're going to be partners along the way. There's not going to be any surprises. But we felt it was important, as the leaders of, of the Hartford community, that you all are basically told first, given a, you know, a quick overview of what's happening with the project, because we would not want you to be surprised by one of your constituents calling you and saying, hey, what's happening in my street? And you weren't aware, even though sometimes you know how rumors or telephone tag goes, where it gets out, and then people start talking. And we want to make sure that you, as the council persons, are aware of whatever source is doing here. Our next slide. So initially, the, the very first thing, even before we get to this slide, we're going to be sending out a postcard to every resident and every business along those re, those streets that were enumerated in the previous slide. And the postcard basically says, you'll see some people out walking in the streets, taking some measurements. And we want to know if you need further communication in Spanish. And we'll have a database set up. So anybody that responds back to that postcard that says, I prefer all my communication, written communication be done in Spanish, we, we will build a database. So any future communication to that residence or business will be delivered in Spanish. We'll also have a website set up, and it'll have multiple languages. So people won't feel left out or diminished because they don't, they're not fluent in English. They'll have multiple languages on there. Once we get an idea of what the languages are that are spoken in those particular neighborhoods. They will be getting a letter, they, meaning your businesses and your residents. And this is kind of just a typical example of what one looks like. It talks about, you know, the hours that we'll be working, the location that we'll be working, kind of some pictures of what the work looks like. And then, and also there'll be timelines and contact information for the folks to reach out if they have any additional or further questions. The next slide. Again, I spoke about a website. A lot, a lot of us really are tech savvy nowadays, and we prefer not to maybe talk to somebody in person, but we want to look for ourselves to see what's going on. This is an example of a website that was done on another. If you see here, it says the 1768 Lattice Tower Project, and those are, I call those the Eiffel Towers. But we were taking those down and putting in steel poles. And it was impactful. So people had a lot of questions. So this was, we will be creating a website. I'm in the process of doing that right now. And so people can go on the website and kind of get an overview of why the project's necessary, what's happening with the project, when it's going to start. How do I get more information? Because people have maybe specific questions that they want to ask, and those vary immensely. So it provides that key contact information for, for everybody. And next slide. And then again, we're going to make sure that we have one dedicated person, a construction representative, that's particular only to this project. So if you don't, if you contact this person today, they're not going to be working down in Greenwich or in Stanford or Bridgeport or Danbury, some of the other lines that we're going to be working on. They're going to be dedicated to the Hartford project. And they will coordinate all, all the logistics of that project, whether it's traffic congestion, any environmental impacts, communications, road and sidewalk restoration. It's a one-stop shop. So you, once, and we will give you that name and the cell phone number of that representative once they're in place. So if you have any questions or concerns, you can, you go cut out the middleman, go right to that person, and you'll get your questions answered. Next slide. What happens with the, the construction? So we have onboarded a traffic engineer to help us determine, you know, what is the busiest times? They'll be putting out those car counters on the different streets along the route to figure out the traffic impact, what would be a good time to work, what, what's not a good time. We'll also be working with your DPW, the schools, fire police. Jonathan and I will be setting up meetings with all the NRZs, the chairs, and come to their meetings that they want to ask us questions about specific things. Because we want to be open and transparent about what we're doing and why, why we need to do it. But we anticipate that construction will be, you know, Monday through Saturday, seven to seven. And we're going to have four crews spread out through, along the route, on both routes. Because we honestly, we want to get into your neighborhoods and get out of your neighborhoods to be as least intrusive as possible. And the construction, we only can go about 10 feet a day. So it's going to be kind of a long process, but sooner that we can get in, I think the sooner that we can get out without disruption of everybody's daily lives. Next slide. And then people always ask about, well, what's going to happen to my street when you excavate? Well, whatever your requirements are for the city of Hartford and on the state of Connecticut, if you say, we require this to be done, then that's what we'll do. Because we're, we're a guest in your city, and we will make sure that we work with you to restore sidewalks or any public spaces and streets to your satisfaction. And then if we're on a private property, we also, even before we put a shovel in the ground, we always reach an agreement with the private property owners to make sure that we were both on the same page, and they fully understand what they can expect, both during construction and during the restoration period. Next slide. And, you know, we want to be partners with Hartford. So this just shows you a couple of examples of some of the monetary gain that we, Eversource has donated to the city of Hartford and the top three bullet points. And working with the project director at the behest of the Chief Operating Officer's Office, she asked, what else can we do? And our project director had, has pledged to donate $2,500 scholarships to each of the NRZs where the project is going forward. And we'll work with the council on how you want to do that, whether you, however you'd like to propose that. And if you want to do a PR or media campaign on that, we'll, we'll work with you. So once our project's fully funded, that's what we would like to do to continue our great partnership with the city of Hartford. Next slide. When are we going to start? Well, we've already been doing some work already. Our engineering group has already begun and is well into seeing what's under, under the roads, because there's a lot of utilities that are under there. We're moving into the, into the yellow phase here for the community outreach. So we started that with internal departments working with you. And that community outreach does not stop at all. It goes right to the end of the project. When are we going to start construction? We anticipate starting sometime in the middle of summer of next year. So there's a big process before we get to there. And, and part of that is different approvals, getting different easements, some rights to be on some properties, some temporary work zones that we'd, we'd like, where we have to either store equipment or put some soil temporarily while we're digging. And that's why we asked some of our real estate folks to, to be on our call tonight, just in case you had specific questions, because we are in conversations with the DPW and the Engineering Department on seeking easements. And you'll get that full package in the, in the future. Next slide. And this is just some direct contact information. So Irvin Kira is our project director. And Stephanie Barrios, she's on our, our line. She works directly under Irvin, who is assigned on this project. And then Jonathan, as you heard, introduced himself as response for the municipal outreach. And I'm on the very bottom of the page for community outreach for the project and outreach and any questions. And that concludes our, the next slide is just a Q and A slide. So we can take that down and be more than happy to answer. I know I went fast, but I, I hope you had a chance to look at the prepared slideshow that hopefully we got to you before the meeting. If not, you know, like I said, outreach doesn't stop tonight. It's going to go right on through the, the end of the project. So we're more than happy to answer questions that anybody has at this time or even in the future.
Sure. Could we bring back the slide? I'm sorry, to the, the letter that's going to be sent out? And can you make it a little bit bigger, please?
So I'm just trying to figure out on the Zoom.
Okay, so you said that you were going to send out. I mean, why can't this letter, if, if, are these the only two pages that are be going, that are going out with the letter?
Well, this is just an example of one, and we can customize it to
Right, so.
as we move forward. But before this letter goes out, President Rosado, there's going to be like a postcard. I don't have a copy of it here. It basically says, people will be walking around in the street, looking at things, and we're going to be doing a project. And, you know, you'll be getting, do you prefer your communication in Spanish or in English? And then
No, I see, you know, I see that getting kind of like a technical. I mean, we have some households where we have Spanish-speaking parents, right? The children only speak Spanish, but don't read Spanish. So would it be that difficult that, that it went out in Spanish and English? Or if you could attach a QR code that they could perhaps click on it, and it'd be Spanish and English?
Sure. Our website will have, will have both. But we were just trying to, for a written communication, to make sure that if somebody reached out to us, said, you know, we only can read in Spanish in our household, can you send us whatever you're doing in Spanish? We want to make sure that that's available.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, and, and like you said, right? Our, my, well, I'm going to speak for myself. My goal is that when the residents, the, the business owners see the Eversource trucks, that, that they can say, oh, they're here, right? They're going to start the project, or they're going to start working on our street instead of, why is Eversource here? So I am going to open it up now to my council colleagues, as I saw them raise their hands. Assistant Majority Rosetti.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of questions, and I know everybody has a lot of questions. So I just, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, is that a normal working time for Eversource and other communities?
Yes, ma'am. We, that's our standard when we ask for, for filing. If we have to adjust it on a particular hour or day, then we can do that. But that is our, our standard. And obviously, in the wintertime, 7 o'clock, it's pitch dark. So we generally don't, it's
True. But so it is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, six days a week normally in other communities.
Right. And then we generally, if something happens and we have to work on a Sunday, then we have to get siding council approval to work on that additional Sunday. Or if we want to work past 7 o'clock, for example, in Windsor Locks, the train schedule changed, just as an example. And we, our crew asked to work till 8 o'clock that evening. Well, we couldn't just on our own decide we're going to work till 8 o'clock. We had to get siding council approval to extend the hour by one hour.
Is this allowed, allowed process?
Noise-wise?
Yes, noise-wise.
Well, it's typical when you're in the, in the railway, you see some jackhammering or sort of saw cutting and excavation.
Now, other, you know, not to belabor this, but other projects that are from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in neighborhoods, seven days a week, are they as loud?
You know, it depends. For underground, it's the same, the same type of means and methods that we would, we would do. Again, Hartford, we're, so we back up a little bit. There are four underground lines in the state of Connecticut that are getting replaced. Two of them are in Hartford, one's in Danbury, and one's in Stanford. And we're treating all four the same. So it's going to be a request to work 7 to 7, Monday through Saturday, in Stanford, and in Danbury, and in Hartford.
And, and so I just want to say here, I do have a concern about that. I mean, that is 7 to 7, you know, people work different shifts if it's loud. I mean, I, I just want to put that out there. The other thing, technology-wise, let's not assume everyone has access to technology. So if we learned anything from an easement project that went through recently was that you can't have too much communication, but particularly in a city with many languages, broadband deserts, so forth and so on, access to technology. I think you have to think of alternate ways to get out information. Certainly, you said the streets will be, streets and others will be back to, we have been promised time and time again that streets would be back to where they were. And that is a commitment that does not happen. So I'd like to think that this time it will happen. And that is something that, you know, certainly would be, people would be really, really disappointed that, that wouldn't happen. Just an FYI for you, it's not CSS Con, it's CisCon, just so when you make the next presentation. And I think, you know, I know others have, so I, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
That's what we're saying. You know, I thank you so much. And I should have, I failed to mention the fact that part of our outreach is we do a door-to-door campaign as well. So in addition to the letters that are received in the mailbox, and not everybody, you know, may go out to their mailbox or check it, and, or they may see it and think it's a junk mail and just toss it out. We do, we do plan on going door-to-door along the entire route, introducing, you know, our, the residents and the businesses to the project, and then giving them contact information. So phone numbers, so that they can get back to us, or in the website, et cetera.
Well, I just want to leave you with this. I think you, you absolutely can't do too much outreach. You absolutely can't do too much outreach. So that would be my closing comment. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Wickos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So well, actually, I'll come back to my questions at the end. Councilman Mishdom?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you for this presentation. I, I want to follow up on one of the council president's first, one of her first questions. And really urge you to just send all the communications, including, send all the communications in English and Spanish. You know, I think to ask people affirmatively to have to be the ones to tell you that they speak Spanish is, you know, a lot of people aren't going to do that. But if you just send it in Spanish, you're covering a big chunk of the foreign language speakers in our city. And it's not that much space. It's not that much effort.
Done.
I also, I also wanted to know, you mentioned that there's going to be like a, a project, a go-to person for complaints. How would it be possible? Is the thinking that that, that number is available to the public, or it's just available to us? What's the vision for how available that person is?
Well, I, I think that it's for the leadership of the municipality, yourselves and your department heads. Because we want that person to be overseeing the crews out in the streets as well. And if they, hopefully, we're not going to have a lot of complaints. But if they spend a majority of their time on the phone, we have other folks like myself, Jonathan. We have a project hotline that folks can call. We can help filter out some of those, if there's a complaint, what those are, and hopefully we can mediate it. But we do have somebody that is going to be, I want to stress, involved with the project on a daily basis.
Okay, so the hotline number, is, is that a number that would go to the public more likely than
Yes, absolutely.
And, and does that, and that has non-English language services?
Yes, sir.
And would you post that, like, at the places where the work is happening? In other words, like, if I go, not me, right? I'm in this meeting. I know about it. But if one of my neighbors goes out and they see the truck, would it be that they could see it there, so that they don't have to feel like, to find out what it is, they have to interrupt the workpeople or something like that?
I, I don't know. I, I'm hoping that the outreach that we're going to do there, that we would have hit everybody prior to that happening, so they know there's a project going on. We're certainly going to work with all the NRZs to help get that information out. And, you know, there's going to be newspapers, both, I think it's Latina News, and, you know, articles, websites. I'm going to do door-to-door. So I, I, you know, I, I can't answer that. There's going to be a sign posted at every worksite. Because again, we're going to try to have four crews spread out along the route to try to get in and get out faster, as, as fast as we can, because we know it's a disruption. But it's, unfortunately, it's one of those necessary evils that we just have to deal with.
I, I, I would sort of second what Councilman Rosetti said in that regard, which is probably good to have that. I mean, every worksite is going to have a truck at least, to have that number, you know, taped to the truck or something. Just the more ways that people can find out what's going on, and also register complaints if the, you know, the workpeople leave something blocking a driveway, or they leave a sidewalk torn up, and it seems like they're not coming back. I mean, I know it's increasing your call volume potentially, but I think it's, it's a little bit of prevention at the front end to avoid a lot of unhappiness at the back end.
Great. So let me ask you a quick question, just to clarify. So you've seen the signs that say, like, flagger ahead? Or, you know, one lane traffic. If we had something like that, gave the, the project info line or complaint desk, or whatever, whatever the verbiage is, and posted that by each truck, do you think that satisfies your request?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, all right. Good, great suggestion. You're welcome.
I have nothing else. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Mishdom. I just want to acknowledge our Assistant Majority Leader, who has been with us on the screen for quite a bit now, Assistant Majority Leader, TJ Clark. Councilman Almika Hernandez, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I, I had three items, but one of them has been talked about already a few times, which is the, the Spanish-English. We should be upfront with the Spanish and English. We already agreed to it. So I'm not going to, you know, comment on that. So question, in, in terms of communication to the neighborhoods or the residents of the areas that will be affected, how far from the construction you plan to go as far as the radius? So let's say you go down New Park Avenue, the adjacent streets. How far are you planning to send those postcards or those communications? A few blocks, you know, away from it? Like, what, what is the methodology there?
My thought would be, if we're detouring traffic, or, you know, one lane traffic, then it's going to cause traffic to flow on another side street, that we'd have to make sure that those folks are just as aware. So I would say a block on each side.
Regardless if they're going to be, if the traffic will go that way, like, say that is a street that's just going to be affected by construction, but traffic is not going to really be a burden on that street. Will they be also communicated only because they leave right on the block before the construction?
Yes.
Be, yes, okay, perfect. And then the last question, I know that you spoke about the project restoration. I, I would say since, since it says that it's going to be based on specifications that are determined by the state of Connecticut or the city of Hartford, I will say that one thing that I know happens, and, and this is with all utility companies, so it's not just Eversource, is that they do patch the streets. It's, everything is nice, except that they always forget, for some reason, those manholes, they are, they, they are not level with the streets. Every time there's a construction, they pave it, they patch it, but then the, the manholes, those plates, they are not level with the streets. And it just creates the same effect as if you had a pothole, right? And, and it seems like that always seems to kind of fall to the cracks. So I just want to put in your forefront that that needs to be addressed. We have, I will say, it's, I, I don't want to use the word crisis, but we really have hundreds, if not thousands, of those manholes right now throughout the city that are not leveled. And, and it all falls on utility companies, because it's your, it's your responsibility. So I just want to put it on your forefront that, that that needs to be, you know, kind of one of the specifications during that restoration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We're taking notes of our Thank you, uh, Councilman. We're taking notes of our, of your requests this evening and we'll make sure that it's part of our agenda items as we move the project forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And, and just for the record, I, I was um, doing a little bit of research on that. I believe we have an ordinance out there that states that whenever a contractor comes in to do any type of work, they're supposed to come back six months. And um, and look at it. And if any re- repairs, they, they, they should repair them. Uh, Councilman LeBron?
Thank you, Madam President, and if you view, um, um, I want to uh, thank Eversource for this detailed presentation and uh, coming to the council uh, first for not only just presenting, but also um, receiving suggestions. So that is uh, greatly appreciated. Uh, the first question that I have is um, these new cables or the new technology uh, that's being installed, are they more efficient? Is that the purpose of the installation?
Well, part of the, the purpose of the installation is that the current um, piping, if you will, is no longer, we can't get it anymore. Uh, there's only one worldwide manufacturer, I think it's called, I know I got the name wrong, but Okanite or something like this. I can't remember off the top of my head. Uh, but they've notified utilities across the globe. We, we're not making this product anymore. And so uh, we were forced to find another uh, supplier. And actually I, people would say, well, this is not fluid filled anymore. The other one's filled with uh, environmentally friendly oil. But this one's doesn't contain oil. So the argument could be that yes, it's more environmentally friendly.
So uh, it being a newer technology from fifty years from nineteen seventy-four to now, and it being more environmentally friendly, would it, would it um, create more efficiency in terms of uh, the electric supply?
Yeah, that would be a good question for our engineers. I, I could get back to you on that, Councilman.
The reason.
I don't know a hundred percent.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking, because if it's more efficient subsequently, uh, the ability to provide the electricity to the homes and um, for our residents would be quicker, correct?
I think the, the way the electricity flows, it's milliseconds and I.
Speed of light, right?
You, you wouldn't see, I don't think you'd see any change, but I, I think, you know, but I don't want to speak because I'm, from an engineering perspective. But I think at the end of the day, it's, it's a, as I said, you know, one of those lines goes down now, you're, you're thousands, thousands of people are going to be out. And you know, they're getting to their end of their life. So we, that's why we're replacing all of them in the state of Connecticut.
Well, I was just uh, curious, um, because I'm thinking in terms of the outreach, right? And um, the community that are going to be disrupted on their daily. And I'm just thinking about the messaging that we're providing to them. I think it's a harder message saying, hey, listen, we're tearing up your street because this supply vendor isn't going to be doing it. I think it, we understand it, but if there's some benefit, like um, I know the lights uh, on a broader scale, but just in terms of if, if, if it's more efficient technology, more environmentally friendly technology. And more importantly, if they can lower our bills in the city of Hartford, like those would be things that folks would be more receptive to and more welcoming than just understanding distribution of pipelines, right? I think that that message may fall short. So if we can find um, messaging and um, you know, ring those, those three things, you know, potentially efficiency, environmentally friendly and or lowering the cost of uh, electricity to uh, each um, resident would be tremendous, even if it's, you know, uh, nominal.
Right, okay. Yeah, I know. We're going to speak more towards reliability because it's definitely a more reliable.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to share with you guys, uh, you all here on the call tonight, exactly, you know, so I won't get that technical when we do our outreach.
So it looks like somebody else is going to speak and, and I.
Yeah, sorry, Councilman. I was just going to add quickly what Kevin just said. It's, it's not so much um, like quicker delivery to customers as it is. It's more reliable. It's a newer cable, you know, it's, it's a newer technology. Obviously it's replacing something that's been down there a long time. So as far as um, the messaging goes, you know, it, it's more of a reliability upgrade, as Kevin said.
Because we didn't see what was actually in the letter. And I know it was a sample letter, but you know, reliability, you know, the things that you're saying, you know, more environmentally friendly, like those are the type of things that are resonate with our residents um, being disrupted from seven AM to seven PM. Um, I, I, I do want to just get a little bit nuanced in terms of the patching. I know we've uh, 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 other council members have brought it up, but I just want to reiterate because it is, it is a measure of quality of life in the city of Hartford and how residents measure the quality of life and guests measure the quality of life by riding on our roads. And so um, in terms of uh, the patching, has, have you guys done an assessment of the current subcontractors that you use? And the quality of their patching um, and their follow-up? Uh, for the, particularly in the city of Hartford?
Uh, we haven't gotten that far yet. Um, you know, we're still engineering to make sure that we can put the underground cable where we can. Um, because our engineers are doing subsurface uh, surveys right now. Uh, we, we're pretty close to being done, but we've got a little bit more to do. You know, one of the things that we do is like, we'll, we'll look to DPW and ask, what, what are the specs in the city of Hartford? Uh, if somebody has to cut a trench that's, you know, four feet wide. Does it, does it, do they say you can just patch it? Or depending on when was the road resurfaced, we're going to make you, you know, pave curb to curb or half the road. Uh, whatever your current standard is, that's, we're going to do that. And there's also a possibility, you know, when we get further down the road in the project, we've done another projects. If the city of Hartford has a paver that they like, you know, that's a possibility that we could just pay you and you could have your paver do it because you, you like the work that they do versus us.
Yeah.
So that, that's always a discussion open that we'll have. Because we, we want you to feel comfortable with the work that we're doing. And, and when we're, we're all done, we shake hands with friends and you guys can say, you, you did a good job, Eversource. Thank you. And, and we want that because you know, we're, you're our customers and um, you know, we all, well, most of us work in Hartford and we're traveling on the roads every day.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that Hartford has access or we're, we're able to have the best, the highest industry standards. I know there's the regulations, right? There's the, there's the basics of what needs to happen, but then there's also the quality of what we're, what we, what we get, right? So if we can have the best um, that you guys have, you know, whatever measurement that is for you guys personally, as well as a conversation with DPW. I know anecdotally, they, they know the subcontractors who do a good job and who do a poor job. And so we just want to make sure that we have the best quality folks who do this type of works um, in Hartford. Um, uh, number one. And then number two, in terms of what the potential of being such a large construction project, if you can also make sure that the contractors that are being utilized are folks that are timely, I would, I would imagine that there probably be if something is patched or filled, you know, there's likelihood that sometimes somebody may have to come back and repatch it or, you know, do whatever it is. Secure that, that also is part of the assessment in that um, is, is it someone who is generally delayed in their response? Uh, because that's the other issue is that folks are wanting to come back, but if there's a delay in the response, every time that hole is there, those are more tires that get blown, more axles that get blown and that delayed response. So you know, those key, those two key quality um, characteristics of the subcontractor should be held at the highest esteem to make sure that our residents um, you know, have uh, the best roads after this construction project is done.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. And we'll, we'll talk with uh, Mike Looney to see, you know, if he could give us a few of the names that uh, he feels very comfortable with, though, that, you know, has worked in the city before for, for paving projects.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkens, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. A, a project like this, um, which was the last city you did it in?
Well, this is the first time we're doing it in Hartford or in Connecticut, as far as I know. And these pipes are fifty years old. There's only four of them, as I said, in the, in the entire state and we're replacing all four. So.
And you said you're doing other cities too, right?
I'm sorry?
You said you're doing other cities too?
Right. Stanford and Danbury are also being done.
Okay. At the same time that you're doing Hartford?
Uh, they're, they're progressive. They're not as fast as we are, uh, farther along, but they're all moving in the same, same vein. I, we're hoping to start construction uh, the same year in both those cities.
Okay. So again, with the um, with the slide that you had, and I can't remember, what would be one of the residential, if anyone remembers a street, the residential street on there? A more of a residential street, that it's just practically residence.
Oh, I got Whitney Street, Council President.
Okay. So, so um, can you kind of explain to me what a day would look like on Whitney Street? I'm concerned about signage. I'm concerned about communication. I'm concerned about when people leave to work.
Bus pickup, very narrow street.
Exactly. Where are people going to park? You know?
Right. And, and that is all going to be honestly handled by our, our traffic engineering staff uh, who we've onboarded. I don't recall the name off the top of my head, uh, who is going to be looking at. Uh, Stephanie, did you want to speak to that? I see you.
Yeah, I, I was just typing to you. Um, going back to the original question of where we've done it in the city before, we have already started and finished some in West Massachusetts. Um, in that part. So we have started the project and completely finished it already in another state. And in terms of our traffic management, we um, onboarded Benish. And they're local to the state of Connecticut. I forgot what city they're in. Uh, we have used them in Greenwich before.
In Glaston, Glastonbury.
Yes, okay, Glastonbury. And um, they will come out, um, they already gave us their proposal. They gave us like their timeframe of stuff. And after we onboard them officially and all of our paperwork on RN is done, um, they'll come out and officially like do like the traffic patterns and they'll tell us exactly which streets they can be on and how it'll impact. And then once we have that, we're run into by the city and say, hey, you know, this is what we have. These are the streets. These are the options. And we'll give it represented to you with the timeframe of where we can flow the traffic to.
We understand there may be uh, times that, or intersections that we need to work in that may have to do during the overnight. I mean, we were amenable to, you know, as I said, get in and get out, uh, and to address the concerns, uh, you know, anytime there's a, a saw cut or excavator working at somebody's street, they want to know how long you're going to be there for. Um, and honesty is the best and only policy that we can offer. So I think that if we're honest with um, your residents and your businesses upfront, to say, you know, we will go about ten feet a day, uh, that's on average. And um, we, we'll have police details there or if, if they're not available, uh, certified flaggers. So people will be able to get in and out of their businesses. There'll be signs, you know, business. It's near business, businesses remain open during construction. Um, if, if we know that uh, it's a school bus route, um, we're not going to be, most of, I don't think we're going to be taking up the entire road. So uh, we'll be allowed, school buses still be allowed to um, traverse up and down the street as necessary and as need be. And if there's um, a, a high, high level of impact traffic during a certain hour, we'll work around that. Uh, we just, we want to be accommodating by, but still getting, uh, the work done.
Absolutely. Because we have a lot of people that park on the street in the city of Hartford. And the hours again, um, so usually you said, not usually, you said that um, during weekdays, it would be seven AM to nine PM?
Seven AM to seven PM.
Okay. And Saturdays?
The same, seven to seven. It's our standard ask uh, that we, uh, when we apply uh, with the siding council.
Yeah. Cause what, in the city of Hartford, night, night, night shall mean the hours between ten PM and seven AM, Saturday evening through Saturday morning, except the night that shall mean the hours between ten PM and Saturday's nine AM on Sunday. So.
Okay. So yeah, we wouldn't, we, we don't anticipate doing any work on a Sunday. Um, unless we fall behind or some extenuous, something happened, then we would have to seek permission uh, for that.
You know, and then in the near future, I would like for the uh, traffic engineering to come in front of council and kind of give us an update.
Oh, absolutely.
Council, Councilman Gale, followed by Councilwoman Rosetti.
Thank you, Council President, and uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, can I assume, can we assume that you have, you currently have all the easements that you need for this transmission line, the existing transmission lines that are there?
Yeah, for where we are now, we do.
So you wouldn't need anybody's permission to go in and dig up that line and replace it with some other line?
Well, the, the problem, Councilman Gale, is we can't um, dig up that line because it has to remain energized because of the number of businesses and people that it, residents that it feeds. So we've got to build the other line. And then we can switch it over.
So you will, you will be looking for some greater permission to work outside of your existing easement?
Yeah, in some cases, and I, I'll let um, uh, either Brian, Alicia or Scott Wilkins uh, talk to that.
Hi, this is Scott Wilkins. Yes, there's three areas that we're looking to get easement uh, on city properties. One is through Cold Park, which Kevin showed earlier. Uh, there's another over, over by, on Reserve Road by uh, the Cairo Bridge. And then, and then Hamilton Bridge Street Crossing, either north or south, either way it affects uh, city property. So we are looking to get permanent easements for those areas. And we've talked with Frank De La Ripa over at DPW. He has packages of our standard easements. And uh, he said he was going to also pass them along for, for legal review. And that was kind of um, part of this meeting is to, to see what the next process would be with, with the, with the council. If uh, if all the reviews from the different departments are done and, you know, legal as well, uh, what would be, um, I don't know if that's uh, Council President Rosado, if that's a question for you, what would be the next steps to get, you know, once those approvals are done, to get the, the easements finalized and approved by the, by the city council?
Um, well, we, I'm sure they'll come back to us ultimately for approval. Uh, but let me, so do I understand, just so I get the picture here, is your current easement then sufficient? So for instance, the work that you need to do on Whitney Street, understanding that you're not going to dig up the existing line, you're going to be putting something next to it, you're still going to be within your existing easement. You, you have enough space to do that?
Well, it's actually in the, in the roadway. You know, ninety-five plus percent, ninety-nine percent of this is actually an existing roadway. So there is no actual easement. Uh, they, uh, Eversource, that's what they call franchise rights to occupy inside the road minutes.
So Councilman Gale, yes, you are correct that we, we don't need to.
And when you're done, uh, because you mentioned that you, you have to leave the existing line there. But when you're done, is that existing, are you then going to go back and remove that existing line? Or is that just going to become historical detress underneath the road?
No, what will happen is we'll um, pull the oil out, out of the line and then pull the, the cable out and we'll leave it in place. There's, there's possibility of us um, putting some communication wire in there for uh, our substations to talk to each other. But we haven't really contemplated that yet, but we're, we're not going to dig those up. They'll be buried in place. Or stay, remain in place and we're not going to touch them, other than, you know, draining and pulling the wire.
And so in looking at the picture, it strikes me that the, the main, the power is all coming from the South Meadows. It comes somewhere into the South Meadows and then you're distributing it from there uh, to these two substations. And you mentioned concerns that this is old and unreliable and it could go out. So I'm just wondering if, if that line um, did go out, let's just say that the, you know, leaving from the South um, station, the South Meadows, if that, if that line, uh, you know, somewhere across Cold Park did go out, who would be affected? Kevin, I can weigh in. So you know, we'd, we'd have to look at the specific circuits. Um, and it also depends on the type of fault we're looking at. But you know, we have, it, it would, it would be typically hundreds, if not thousands of customers if we're talking about, you know, a substation problem or a transmission cable. It, it's, it's much more severe than, you know, a regular like distribution fault, a transformer or, you know, a fuse blowing, something like that. Has it ever happened? Yeah, I mean, there, there's, there are issues, um, you know, substation issues. Um, and typically our system um, is, you know, designed with reclosers and it has the ability to kind of um, in a smart way isolate it down. So a lot of times what will happen is there'll be um, a momentary outage for maybe a thousand customers and um, you know, eight hundred of them will be picked up automatically by our automatic devices, um, reclosing and operating. And then it isolates the fault down. And that's when, you know, we will, you know, send the crews out um, to find out where the fault is and then make uh, the permanent fix. So I, um, I'm just speculating on this and, and perhaps you can come back and, and clarify it for us, but it, it certainly strikes me that what these transmission lines are doing is carrying electricity across Hartford to then distribute it to West Hartford and. Is carrying electricity across Hartford to then distribute it to West Hartford and Bloomfield. It it kind of strikes me that these, these, uh, substations where these transmission lines are going to. Aren't really serving me, for instance, or most of my neighbors. I live on Whitney, off Whitney Street. And I mean, I can see the overhead lines on Whitney Street, so I'm obviously not being served by any underground.
Uh, Councilman Gale, the the these, these transmission lines that we're talking about, they're a hundred and fifteen KV, kilovolts. Uh, there is a high. Um. Put my engineering cap on, even I don't have one. Uh, it's it's a high level of electricity. And it gets fed into the substations and from the substations, it gets dropped down to levels that feed the homes. So, um.
And that, I just, I would like to see which homes are being fed at some point. If you could, if you could just show us which homes are being fed.
I honestly, for security reasons, I don't think we can share, uh, what homes are fed off of what circuits. I don't know, it's a Homeland Security thing, because if somebody took it out, then they could. But we can give you a geographic area, how's that? I I don't think I can give you by street.
Well, I don't I don't need to know the names of the people that are being served, but, yeah.
No, but.
It geographic, I'm just trying to get a sense, because it, I mean, you know, electric power is a distribution system, uh, we, I, you know, we kind of get it. It starts somewhere and then it's gotta get to somewhere else, and and so you're bringing this electricity from somewhere, and ultimately. You've got to get it from through Hartford to West Hartford to Bloomfield. I don't know if you have generating. Facilities in, you know, Farmington that serve West Hartford from that direction, or whether it's all coming from the, uh, you know, from Millstone and from the east and. And coming up this way, whatever. I I would just like to get a sense, um, particularly because, uh, you know, just trying to see to what extent. This is actually benefiting Hartford, or to what extent this is really benefiting our neighbors. Um, and we're the conduit for our neighbors, so.
I I I understand your question and we'll get that to you, and also. One of the benefits that is never really mentioned, um, and it's solely only a benefit to Hartford is the. The tax revenue that the city gets, um, because all of our, all of our assets are are taxed as part of your, your mill rate. Um, so, you know, we do pay taxes on the underground. Cable in the city of Hartford that is not shared with any other communities, I mean, it just goes on to your, into your mill rate. Or your your grant list, not your mill rate, your grant list. Sorry.
Good point, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Assistant Majority Leader Rosetti?
Thank you, Council President, and I am glad you pay taxes, because. We need those taxes. Um, listen, I don't wanna belabor this, but, um. You know, this is not an apples-to-apples project. So, you know, I know it's been done in other places. The city of Hartford, you know, old city, tight streets. Not a lot of on-street parking. A ticketed person can, uh, make a difference between, um, you know. Paying their light bill, ha ha, or their grocery bill. Um, and I'm really concerned, because I don't know, Whitney Street is in my head, because that's one of the streets. And we have a lot of concern with Whitney right now anyway, with bus pickup and. And, you know, everyone on this, uh, call knows how, you know, congested Whitney is, particularly in the morning and afternoon and. You know, no on-street parking, and I am really concerned. And I, you know, I know you can't guarantee us, but I want it to be said here publicly. That I don't want any residents getting tickets because of this project. Because where they're normally able to park. Something is gonna happen. If you're working, you know, two jobs, you're taking your kid to childcare. And you're not gonna be able to park where you live, this is gonna be a disruption for people. And I think we need to be sensitive to. What this is gonna do in a city of who we are, and I appreciate us. Thinking about where it's happened in other areas or other towns, but I really also want us to think really clearly about how disruptive. Uh, this can be for people, and, uh, you know, I'm not gonna go on about it, but I think you get what I'm trying to say. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to address Eversource with any? Questions, concerns? Is there anything else that Eversource wants to, uh, relate to us now that we're on this call?
Uh, thank you, President Rosado, and thank you to all the council members for allowing us to present to you this evening. You had some great points. We, I know we have, um. Councilwoman Rosetti to get back to Councilman Gale, uh, and a few others on some of your concerns and questions about, uh, things. Um, and.
When you're getting back to us, just get back to everybody.
Okay, yeah, well, send it to, uh, is, uh, Nilia, is that how you pronounce it?
And she can forward it to everyone, yes.
Okay, we'll do that, and, um, just give us a little bit of time, but. Um, we thank you for your time this evening, and, uh, your your staff at City Hall is phenomenal. Um, you know, they've been so great to work with, and and I thank you as the leaders of your community. And we look forward to a to a great partnership, and feel free to. Our phone numbers and our emails, Jonathan and mine are on that last sheet, reach out to us with any questions you have, and look forward to a follow-up.
Absolutely, and so we're very clear that the communication is going to go out in Spanish and English, correct?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, rather than try to figure it out, they're they're getting two letters. They're gonna be the same thing, one will be in English, one will be in Spanish, and I think that was a great. Resolution here tonight, and that's how we're gonna move it forward.
Great, great, great. So, uh, thank you so much for your presentation, and we look forward to, uh. Uh, you getting back to us with, uh. Questions and answers, and, um, we will reach out if we have any more. But I am really looking forward to having the, uh, traffic engineering present to council.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that that's one takeaway, that once we, uh, get them onboard and they they do their study. That way they can actually give you something that you can kind of get. You know, get into, rather than just giving you an overview, I think you probably wanna see, well, what are what are your thoughts? And then you had that discussion early on with, uh, the traffic engineer.
Yeah, and so I'm looking to, um, for a lot of communication from Eversource to all of our residents, and I know that you touched a point on the NRZs. Um, but sometimes we have some NRZs that, you know, twenty, thirty people attend, and that they don't represent the entire, you know, neighborhood, so. Um, like Councilwoman Rosetti said, we can't have too much communication of them.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.